Good evening and welcome to the February 20th, 2018 meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen. May we have a roll call, please?
Good evening. President, Selectmen Troppiano, Selectmen Scasiati, Selectmen Slavin, Selectmen Tittlebaum, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan.
Let's see, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Jepson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see announcements, Selectmen Troppiano.
Yeah, tomorrow night at 5:00 at the Church of the Good Shepherd's, the drop-in night. I've talked about this before, anyone who's having addiction issues, whether they're drugs or alcohol, you could go there, there'd be a lot of help for you, there's a lot of people that can get you into a program, there's a lot of stuff that's, information that you can have, and I want to make it clear, it's also a place where if you're dealing with somebody who has one of these issues, you can go and they can get you help and information and so on and so forth and how to deal with it. Because it's not just for the addicts themselves or the people that are having the issues, it's also for the people that are dealing with those people that are having the issue. Because that can be harder sometimes than the person that's going through it themselves. And of course, the person going through it, the danger is that they'll do something that causes them to lose their life or something of that nature. But the person that's dealing with it is probably quite confused, you know, troubled about how they're going to help, frustrated because nothing they've done has worked. Go there, they have the information, they can help you. 5:00 to 9:00 tomorrow night at the Church of the Good Shepherd, which is right here on High Street.
Well, thank you for that. Selectmen Scasiati.
All set, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, first off, we have a chicken bake and surprise auction Saturday, March 24th, 6:00 PM, Redmond Hall, Main Street, tickets are $20, include salad, half-baked chicken, potato, vegetable rolls, bottle of coffee and dessert. Bring a wrapped item for the surprise auction, maybe something new or repurposed. Claire, you've also got the Washington, George Washington, you want to come up and announce that? I don't have a sheet for that. Thank you.
I could get you something, but thank you. The Wareham Minutemen Militia are hosting a gentleman whose name is Sam Davis on Friday, April 27th. He portrays General George Washington at Washington's Crossing. Howie and I had the opportunity to visit Washington's Crossing last fall, and he is absolutely amazing. And so, we asked him if he would be willing to come to Massachusetts and put on a presentation, excuse me, and he was very excited. He's been to Boston once to shoot a commercial as George Washington, and he was anxious to come back and see some of the historic places. So he's doing a presentation at the high school in the morning for the students at the high school, and then 7:00 on Friday night is open to the public, it is free. The Minutemen Militia will also be raffling off a three-course colonial dinner. It will be dinner with George Washington. There will be three lucky winners, and those three winners can bring guests. The dinner consists of, I don't have the full menu, I'll have it tomorrow, but I know there'll be roast beef, roast stuffed pork, duck, venison, elk, Scotch eggs, cornbread, purple pears, Martha Washington's fruitcake, syllabob. So it will be a very unique experience for the six people. It's going to be at the Marion Music Hall, which lends itself to a historic atmosphere. The food is, all the meats are going to be cooked over the fire outside, and the other food's in a true colonial tradition. So the whole unique experience, whoever those six winners are, will just knock their socks off. So we invite you all to come on Friday night, April 27th, to the high school. There will be plenty of other militias that have been invited, they will all be in kit, so that will lend to the atmosphere. We think the kids are going to really enjoy it, and we think the adults are going to enjoy it. I talked to Sam a couple of weeks ago, and he goes, "What would you like me to talk about?" And I said, "Well, Sam, this is your gig." He goes, "Well, when I was in Boston, and I had to send my Major General Henry Knox back to Maryland to pick up five cannons and bring them back to Washington, and it took them three months to get here, and then he went into this whole spiel, and I finally had to say, 'Excuse me, Sam, can I talk to Sam?'" So he is truly and uniquely a person who lives as George Washington in his mind, and he is absolutely wonderful to listen to. So I urge anybody from the community or surrounding communities, or anybody with an interest in history to come and enjoy him. And then on Saturday morning, we are going to take him to Boston and do the Freedom Trail and some of the historic places. Again, with some of the other militia, we'll all be in costume, and that should be really a fun time for him as well. So I think it's something, you know, we're just coming out of the winter, it will get you out and get you going, and hopefully pique your interest in history.
Watch out for the boat crossing Cranberry Highway.
Yes.
There you go. And I just wanted to point out that none of those tasty critters that you listed that are available for dinner were endangered species at the time Howie shot them.
No, they weren't. But they are very tasty.
It's a great commercial, isn't it?
Indeed, yeah.
George is crossing the highway, that's pretty funny.
We've got some information here. There's a committee called the Energy Environmental Policy Committee for the Mass Municipal Association, which I'm a member of now, it's a legislative branch, it goes up to the State House, et cetera. They're working currently right now on the solid waste recycling, MS4 permits, the solid waste and recycling legislative issues kind of fit in quite interesting with our current situation with the, basically, the two sites that we have for disposal of our rubbish that we have issues to work with. So as that comes forward, I'll let you know where it's going legislatively. Another piece that we probably want to, probably ask the Chair if he can write a letter in support if the Board's willing for its H-3528, which is a House bill, and Act Promoting the Proper Disposal of Miniatures. This has been an ongoing thing for the Board, "Don't trash Wareham," et cetera.
We, I think, last year we did send a letter when the bill was originally filed, but we can certainly send another one.
It's actually, it's moving along a lot more than the last time around.
Yeah.
It's, you know, usually there's opposition to the bottle companies, et cetera, this time it isn't. So that one is coming along. There's also, basically, there's gone, it looks like it's gone through the House, came out with a recommendation from the committee, 13 to 1 for a plastic bag ban for the state. It's moving from a couple of different senators and representatives, and I think it's going to be coming along, so we're going to need to watch and see how that goes. It's basically, you know, it's a good idea and everything else, but we have to make sure that it doesn't adversely affect people who are in business that really will cause an issue, because stuff has to be carried out, you know, to get paper bags strong enough. But I'll keep the Board apprised of where we are. It was first meeting, so I'm just, you know, working along with these things here.
Yep.
And that's all I've got today.
Yeah, a couple of things. Tomorrow night, the planning department is bringing in an attorney who is an expert on general laws, Chapter 40B, which of course is the affordable housing law. There's going to be a seminar to teach people all the ins and outs, as much as you can teach in one evening anyway, about 40B. And with that introduction, I would also note that next Wednesday at 6:30, the Zoning Board of Appeals will be opening their hearing on the Woodland Cove Housing Project. The proposal is for 174 units. I certainly plan on attending. It's on our agenda for discussion later as to what we'd like to submit to the Zoning Board of Appeals in advance of the hearing, in terms of requests for certain things to be studied. But I would urge anybody who's concerned about this project to show up at the hearing so that your voice can be heard, and so that your input is taken in by the Zoning Board of Appeals as they go through the comprehensive permitting process. I also wanted to thank everybody who showed up last week at the Cranberry Highway Improvement Project Public Meeting that was held by Mass DOT. One of the things I'm going to have to ask for under 48-hour business, because I had to get the agenda posted actually before we had that meeting, just because of the holiday, but I am going to be asking the Board under 48-hour business if we can reiterate our support for that project. And, you know, I was discussing with Selectman Slavin afterwards, and I know that he's probably going to be looking for a request for a shorter timeframe, 32 months seems like an awful long time to build a mile and seven tenths of highway. And also to see if there's something we can do to mitigate the businesses, whether there are any state programs, whether there's any relief we can give them in the municipality, so that that will be coming up as well. I just wanted to get that now while we had people in the room, and also, you know, people were still watching, and we hadn't put them to sleep yet. And that's all I have. Let's see, next up, citizens' comments. Anybody like to speak to the Board tonight?
That's where the 6 and 28 stuff goes to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mr. Mark Bianco, representing the Planning Board as well as the citizens of the community here. And just to tail off your last comment on last week's meeting improvements on the Cranberry Highway, I did attend that meeting, and I have a few thoughts about that. I don't want to take up this evening's agenda, but just to throw a concept out there, I think that it was a very productive meeting, they did a nice presentation for us, and definitely in support of the project, but like yourself and the other Board members, I think that it will have an impact on the community, particularly that mile and a half stretch. That is the spine of our community here, and we really analyze the businesses that are on the Cranberry Highway. I think they're going to take a large impact. I'm speaking from my own personal background, having been involved with heavy construction projects throughout the state for nearly two decades now, and seeing what a project of that magnitude could do to a community, particularly a small community. The total sum of the project, eighteen and a half million dollars, is a relatively small project, but the impact on the community is tremendous in the way that it very well could put a heavy strain on the businesses that exist there. And I'd like to propose that we look, as you stated, into some type of grant assistance to help those businesses out. But it needs to be part of this planning process here early on before they close the purse strings on the projects. This community is going to be subject to the means and methods of a federal project as well as a state project, and I want to make sure that, based on the last comment to the last individual, right, that stood up in the meeting last week, and I think even, maybe even, a few of you were there, turned in the direction of a Selectman and said, "Well, maybe the town can give us some relief on our taxes here as business owners." We are not vested in this project, we haven't planned on putting financial assets towards the project, but we are in a position right now to go back to Mass DOT, all the way to a federal level if we have to, and ask for some grant assistance. There were several things that were undone, and I know they're going to get addressed, things like the maintenance budget, with a 10% to 20% increase in the dimensions of the highway, the maintenance budget should increase accordingly, the management of the sidewalks, the construction hours, the pedestrian traffic, the crossings. I know all of those concerns were heard, both at the business level earlier on today and then at the citizens' level in the evening. However, if we don't provide a mechanism at this stage to give those business owners some relief, we're going to miss the opportunity because the doors are going to be closed. So very much like disaster relief after a natural disaster, right, this is more of a planned event in which we can establish a baseline of where the businesses are in 2018, give the business owners an outlet to solicit for relief through some grant mechanisms. And I think most importantly, what we need to do is require the DOT to have a resident engineer present during that construction phase, particularly if it goes out three years. Because if we don't make them accountable for that project themselves, it's going to task all the individuals in Town Hall here to manage the process for them. And the process that I'm speaking of being managed is relevant to the business owners themselves. So I'll leave it at that right now, but I'd like to see if I can request a little time in a future meeting to present a more thorough explanation on what I think can be done, based on my own experiences working with the state and the federal government.
Yeah, I know that the 32-month timeframe was couched to me after the meeting when I expressed some concern about it as an absolute worst-case scenario. I don't see any reason why they can't start it either way and build towards the middle, for example. I mean, that's how a lot of things get built. You know, the first railroad across this country was built that way, so there's no reason why we can't do it today. I did mention at the meeting that we would be asking our Director of Planning and Community Development to look into the possibility of grant assistance, to see what's out there, see what's available from the state, from the feds. As far as property tax relief goes, I don't know that you get that for a temporary condition like that, but I wouldn't want to weigh in on that too heavily right now because I haven't researched that law. But, you know, we are concerned about the timeframe, we are concerned about the impacts, you know, we're certainly in favor of the project because we're also concerned about the loss of life and the amount of just plain property damage to motor vehicles that happens out there on a yearly basis. But we are cognizant of the business issues, and we will be working forward, you know, to try to do what we can to mitigate that. I think Selectmen Troppiano had something to say.
Well, it's a complicated issue. The one thing I want to point out is that the bridge that was built going into, just into Born there, that was supposed to be a three-year project, three years and a month or something like that. And they actually got it done in just over a year and a half. So they, thank God, by the way. Although, you know, they really didn't really, I mean, I went down there plenty of times, and they seemed to handle it pretty well. They seemed to have it open, they seemed to get the traffic through there, and they seemed to handle it really well. And they were really cognizant of our people on the strip, you know what I mean? Because remember, a lot of them come from that direction. They don't just go this way, they come from that direction as well. And I don't think anybody I spoke to had any issues with that bridge construction the entire time it was there.
No.
At all. So that's, and I totally agree. I think we need to make it clear to Mass Highway what we think. And, you know, 32 months is really unacceptable. I mean, that's, there's no reason for that to take 32 months. I mean, I don't, especially since the money's all appropriated. It'd be different if they were going to appropriate part of the money and then pick it up the next year, piece.
Right, yeah, stage it, yeah.
It's already done in 2018, so there's, there's no reason to stage it, you know what I mean? Just get it done, you know what I mean? And I think they understand that. And I got a sense from them in the meeting when I was listening that they knew that the timeframe was going to be an issue, and they were going to look at a lot of that.
Yep.
And the time, see, I think the people that were at the meeting missed a good opportunity, some of them, because everybody was talking about putting bridges over and, you know, things like this, and, you know, that was nowhere in the design phase, and it's like the third design, by the way, so they're at the end of the, you know, the design is the design for more intense purposes. But they missed an opportunity to sort of define those things. Like, okay, can you tell us, are we going to have a place to call so we know what's going to be closed that day? Are we going to, what times are best for us? The best time for us is this window for work, you know, that they could have related to them, and they would have understood, you know, "Okay, yeah, this is good, we want to know this, we want to know what time you think is best for us to be working," and so on. And I think now it's going to leave it up to us to relate that information to them.
Yeah, that, I mean, I do think, if I do remember correctly, Carrie Lavely from the state did get into that a little bit, and did say that they were going to be setting up, I think, a web portal where people could go on and find out about the construction schedule and so on and so forth. But certainly now would be the time to find out from the business owners, you know, when you get your most traffic, to try to avoid, you know, impacting them during those times.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, what's your busiest season and what time of day?
What time of day, right, exactly.
Those are the two things that need to come out.
The project when it was originally done was going to be at this last, supposedly 2016. It could move back to 2018, 2019. About a week ago, they decided to fund the project money-wise all in 2018. So all that, during that time, there was never any discussion about spreading over, you know, three years. So I spoke to Pam Hasner, who's the, you know, DOT dot-five region person in charge, and Pam said, basically, they normally do that, they spread it over two or three years because that's how they lay it out. It doesn't mean it's going to take that long. And we also spoke to, I forget the state official's name that was there.
Yeah, he actually gave me his card. That was the, he was actually DOT's legislative liaison.
Right.
So he was, he was at the meeting so that he could take the concerns back to, back to legislators.
Yeah, we talked to him as well. I asked him directly, I said, "Does the state have any programs when we do a highway fund, because this is going to impact businesses?" And the answer was, "No, they do not, just so you know. So what you're asking for, the state doesn't do." So what I did was, on the, right after the meeting, I spoke to Ken Buckland, I spoke to him tomorrow, actually, I sent him an email, I spoke to him this morning, that we're going to do what we should have done with the project on Main Street and Wareham, which I, I think I made comments back about four years ago, that we need to look at what we have under redevelopment authority, to see what we can come up with to grant through redevelopment in order to find some funding, because that's where it's going to have to come from. So we're already working on that, just so you understand. Pam Hasner, again, we spoke to her, I have the ability to speak to her simply because she's on the same Board I am that I chair. And the comment was, I asked her directly, I said, "We need this project done a year, max a year and a half." I said, "You may want to consider not doing something this summer, which is the key business, most of the businesses income-wise." And her comment was, "Let's get to work on it, see what we can do." So it's already there, so if you're concerned, I appreciate it, but we are working on it.
Yeah, for sure, and I thank you for your time tonight. And I did make the comments that night, so hopefully they'll give us some actual data on an economic impact study. Development money is not going to solve the business owner's problem, though, which I think is going to really get impacted from the construction. And I encourage you to think of the broader considerations beyond the Cranberry Highway. One of the issues that I brought up there that evening was, how does it impact the community of onset with all the events that are going on there? So I guess, again, this is unplanned, mostly on my part here because the meeting was just last week, but if I can just request a little time on the schedule forward, just to vent out a list of concerns that I have that may be worth debating.
Well, if you do, if you do it through the Planning Board, you have to go through the Planning Chairman, it comes to us.
I don't think, through the Planning Board?
If you want to speak to us as a Planning, as the Planning Board.
Yeah.
If you want to speak to us as a citizen, you come before us, we give you five minutes, and that's all it is.
Okay.
Sorry.
Do I get five more minutes, or is this what's my question?
Yeah.
I've got about 10. You can come back, you can come back every week and do it again if you want, it's fine.
Yeah, we won't hold the overage against you for next week.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't accrue like, like some do.
No, everybody starts off fresh every week.
We don't accrue dollars or anything like FEMA does, you know.
We don't roll over either.
Yeah, he just said we don't roll over either, so if you've got two minutes one week, you don't get eight the following, so that's...
Thank you, though.
Thank you, gentlemen.
No, but thank you for the time. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to the Board this evening?
Mr. Jepson.
Come on up.
Don Jepson.
Wait till you get to the mic so they hear you at home.
I don't know if it's appropriate tonight to talk about it. I wrote to Chairman Tittlebaum and kind of expressed what my views are on this whole issue of pot shops coming into Wareham. And I have some very strong feelings on it because I think it sends the wrong message to kids. And one of the things that I mentioned was that it's a gateway drug, and that's my own And I also objected to the fact that the town would benefit to a 3% tax on it. And Mr. Tittlebaum responded to me and told me that basically that it's a mandate from the state, and also it has something to do with the fact that the voters of Wareham voted to make pot shops available or to legalize marijuana. There's a lot of tragedy out there. Mr. Troppiano mentioned this, it won't change my view if whatever says to me that it's not a gateway drug, but that's where people start. What I would like to suggest, if the town has no choice on it, in a lot of the aspects that maybe these pot shops should be located near the police department so they can be monitored, and I also think that there should be a monitoring system so that people that are buying have to register, so how much they're buying is known, so that if there's somebody that's out there reselling, that's obvious to the town. If, if the town is going to put a 3% tax on it, it would be my recommendation that it go into a program such as Mr. Troppiano referenced earlier, or to some sort of program to help those people who have gone down the path from marijuana into other drugs. And that's all I have to say on the subject.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we don't have any appointments, reappointments or interviews. We do, under licenses and permits, have an application for change of manager from Rego &amp; Sons, Inc., DBA 711, 3 Barker Road. Come on up, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just before we start, everything's in place, including tips, et cetera, so we have all the paperwork we need.
And the check, most important part.
And the check we have, yes.
It's there.
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
Your turn, tell us who and what.
Well, I'm the owner-operator, you know, I've been there, I had to do some changes there, and, you know, it's a financial decision that I had to make.
Okay. Questions on the Board? Need a motion?
Make a motion to change of manager to Antonio El Rego.
Yes.
Correct? And this is for Rego &amp; Sons, 711, 3 Barker Road, Wareham, Mass.
Second.
Okay, motion for change of manager by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiati. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. It's unanimous, and the...
No, this has to go to the state, no, in combat.
Oh, that's right, yep.
So hopefully we'll take less than a month back and forth, but they are slow.
That's all right.
But it should be no issue at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And take care.
Okay.
Okay, next up, application for change of beneficial interest from Pepper Dining, Inc., DBA Chili's Grill &amp; Bar Restaurant, 2885 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham. Is there anybody from Chili's tonight, or are we just...
Nope, it's just...
Rubber stamp on this one.
It's a rubber stamp, just change the benefit of intent, interest is all, it's the paperwork, it's here.
Okay, motion, please.
What's the change?
It's just what they call a change of interest.
Oh, okay.
Change of ownership.
Yeah, it's a change of, actually, I think it's a change of stock or something.
Believe it or not, it means nothing.
That's right.
Well, we still have to approve it.
We approve them, but it means nothing.
Right.
That's a fact.
Basically, it's...
Because you can't hold a license.
Nope. It's Pepper Dining, Inc., you know, again, is the main, and it's DBA, business says Chili's Grill &amp; Bar &amp; Restaurant, change of interest, manager Alan Dennison. That's the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiati. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Okay, moving on to town business. I'm actually going to jump down to Item C here because we've got the Chairman of the Sewer Commission and the Water Pollution Control Facility Director here.
It's past nine thirty, I'm Jimmy Stu.
Good, well, you two should be quiet.
We will be. You sure you don't want to use your thing, Jimmy, huh?
So, gentlemen, we received a draft warrant article from the Sewer Commissioners requesting a certain amount of money for a certain pipe, so if you could tell us what this is all about. And also, I understand you have other capital needs that would not be addressed by this, and perhaps now would be the time to introduce those to everybody.
Yeah, we've got a pipe in the ground.
Can you pull your microphone a little closer, please?
It's getting real close to me.
Just kind of eat it.
Put some sauce on it. We've got a pipe in the ground, it's deteriorating through a combination of corrosion and age. It needs to be addressed, and we're proposing relining the pipe. It's a 2.2-mile section, and it goes through swamp from Swift Beach over to the Narrows Pump Station behind the high school, down Kennedy Lane, across High Street, down Sawyer Street, parking lot down Merchants Way. And we're proposing relining the pipe in-ground without having to... And we're proposing relining the pipe in-ground without having to dig up anything. I say without having to dig up, without having to-
Trench the whole thing, yeah.
Trench the entire thing. There'll be spots where it will have to get dug down to get access and out of the line.
What's the anticipated cost of doing this?
Ten million.
Yeah, it's 10 million. You want me to help you a little bit?
Mr. Chairman, if you-
Yeah.
If you will, he's exactly right, beginning on Swiss Beach Road and Mather, that intersection, referring to the overview of it, it goes all the way up Swiss Beach Road, northerly, and then it turns right into Ripley's Trailer Park, through the Trailer Park, and it goes along the marsh behind Bourne Terrace area.
Yep.
And then it goes through the marsh again in the woodland, then it goes behind the track, then behind the middle school, up into the pump station.
Oh, did you have it on your-
He's got it there.
Oh, I want the guys to see it.
No, we can see from here.
We can see it.
We're good.
Thank you.
From pump station to High Street.
High Street's a concern, it's a high-traffic area, and then it's going to turn right down Sawyer, as Mr. Chairman mentioned. Quick right on Main Street, quick left, parallel to the fire station, and then down Merchant's Way to the actual pump station. The pitch is above, our actual cameras, shots of Merchant's Way, and there's one leak there that's approximately 10 gallons per minute, which is 14,000 gallons per day, 5 million gallons a year at 8 cents per gallon, approximately $420,000 to treat groundwater. We're estimating between 25 and, 25 to 40 gallons per minute of extra beyond this 10, so it's substantial. It's also structurally, we have pipe showing that has rebar eaten through the two and a half inches of concrete, through the rebar, which, which virtually makes that pipe susceptible to collapse. We don't want to have a, a Nantucket on our hand, or Plymouth. And if you look at the outline, it's like a horseshoe, and if you look at the sensitive areas up Swiss Beach Road, that pipe runs virtually through the marsh, over the brook, through the marsh, over another brook. So it's very, very sensitive, and to dig it up would be five to six times the 10 million we're asking for. The time just to permit would be forever. So we're asking for your help and for your support in, in floating some money to borrow to do this. Time is of the essence, and, and it's significantly in trouble due to use, over the years, corrosion and things of that sort, so we're here asking for your support. We'd like your support on this at town meeting.
How old is this pipe, if I might ask?
Forty-eight years.
Roughly, this-
Forty-seven, forty-eight years old.
1987, eighty, I believe was the inception of this pipe, taking it from, I think, eighty-seven, from the Swiss Beach area to the Narrows Pump Street, pump station area.
What's the material of that?
It is reinforced concrete, 18-inch and 21-inch reinforced concrete pipe, and the pitches represent the entire pipe, and there's a couple of pitches beneath it, it represents the entire pipe, the entire 2.2 miles.
So when the tide comes in, Guy, those, those waterfall, those little water things become a lot bigger than that?
Yes, and that leak there is non-stop, because it's in the water table, and all the portion of that tripe, that pipe that's in the water table is non-stop. As you get up to the high end of Swiss Beach by Ripley's Trailer Park, there's the same imperfections in the joints, and at high tide, they also leak.
When the tide goes out, the water doesn't go.
When the tide goes out, the water stays there, it doesn't go anywhere.
Let me throw one thing out on this.
So we've got, we've talked about for years now, is the INI is a major problem. We're, we're, basically, we're treating a tremendous amount of water-
Yes, we are.
For no reason. This leak-
Yes, we are.
That shows on that plant. That leak, Guy explained how much per year it's, it's coming in, at 8 cents a gallon. What that translates into meaning is this $10 million that we're asking for, by stopping that, gets paid off in 25 years, just from that one leak alone.
I mean, that, that-
That's costing us 400,000 plus a year to treat that water.
I think Patrick will know a lot more than I do on this, but to me, that leak there, you know, with that volume, and the concrete's basically eroding all around it, and the rebar's present stuff, that could sit there and blow out any time.
Anytime.
If that blows out, it's-
Merchant's Way is in trouble.
Merchant's Way is in trouble.
That, that's, that's more of a concern to me, is the emergent nature of the problem than, you know, what it will, what it will solve going forward is all well and good, but-
See right there.
You need to see this.
I mean, that's horrible.
This is the line, this is the inside of the concrete pipe, right?
Yeah, and there's the rebar, I see it.
This is loud, so I can hear you. This is rebar, did you see?
Yep, which is supposedly in the middle of the pipe.
There's normally about two inches of, of material over the top of that rebar.
Not anymore.
The rebar is wearing, and of course, once it gets into the rebar, then it's not too much for the concrete to poke out holes through it pretty rapidly.
Yep.
So this is a very, a very serious condition right here. This is not a good, not a good thing at all.
No.
And structurally, it can collapse. We got the same situation on High Street-
Pretty much, yeah.
Which is an access for the hospital, the ambulances, I'm concerned about that, Merchant's Way. Also, Swiss Beach Road has the same condition on that pipe, and we're concerned, because if we lose Swiss Beach Road, it's, it's pretty, it could be a major impact, so we're, we have to do something, we can't ignore it. And, and it's, we've got a lot of estimates, and it comes in around 9.8 million, and so it just is what it is, and so we have to, we're looking to borrow up to that and, and get it done.
When you say borrowed, we do have money put aside in capital?
Close to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Don't we have a capital account, Derek, or something, there's some money there?
You don't have the, that's really, that was set aside, there's 3 million set aside for the deficiencies and the betterments. You have another roughly, after that, there'd be 10 million available, so it's, it's going to depend, do you want to spend it all at once, or do you want to actually have a plan to expend money?
I think we have to have a plan, because if we spend that 10 million, and we have a, another disaster like-
We're in trouble.
Not in trouble, we just-
That's why I'm asking to bond it, to borrow it, is what I'd like to do, is to borrow and pay it over the years, is to me, makes the most sense, and leave the money we have there and use it, that's just my opinion.
Well, there's another, there's, there's another pipe in onset that's going to need some attention relatively rapidly, if not right away, and we're looking at at least a couple million bucks for that one.
Yeah, that's correct.
So that could come out of that retained money, and, and reduce it somewhat.
Now, the onset stuff, Patrick, isn't that a different material in the pipe, though?
Well, it's cast iron from Narrows to the pump station, and from the Lopes Field pump station to the plant, they're the same age pipe.
Yeah, it's the same issue.
And they're in trouble. The same as we had before, up on 12th, whatever it was. Remember, we had a fellow had a garage, piece of property, and he had a garage, he was going to put a house on it, and he claimed he didn't have a hookup, and then he had to go in.
It's, this is a, is a cast iron force main, and what we'll try to do there is cut into it, and then clean it and line it. It just seems to be less disruptive.
So it won't collapse like the other deal that-
Correct, correct.
The $30,000 job turned out to be like $300,000.
The $8,000 job that cost $53,000, yes, absolutely.
There's another one bigger than that one, too.
So that, that's, we're trying to avoid that, and trying to be proactive. So as we look at, I, I think I'd submitted to the board years ago, a capital improvement plan, and it calls for $1 million a year of lining a pipe, just to get even. And that plan is a 20-year plan at $100 million, and those are real numbers. It's not a wish list, it's not something we're just hoping for, it's reality, the condition of our infrastructure, our pump stations, I mean, they're there. And now it's time to make some major repairs, and none of it's going to be inexpensive, none of it. So it's going to take very strategic planning, and borrowing, and whatever we can do to do this on a timely manner in the next 20 years, just to get even.
Okay, so I, I want everybody to understand, especially the people that are at home, that this isn't from not paying attention or anything like that. The pipes had a 50-year life expectancy, they're at the end of their life. I'm not so sure that the 50 years is a really good number, because some of the transite and things of that weren't, weren't really good for what they say they were when they were installed. Now, this whole thing of lining a pipe, not too long ago wasn't even available, okay? You couldn't do it. So you couldn't plan and say, "Okay, I'm going to reline so much every year, and get them done, and do whatever you're going to do." You couldn't do it, they couldn't plan for it. What they had to do is figure out that some point, they were going to have to change the pipes. If you're going to change these pipes, it would probably take us a month of Sundays, just to get, just, and I'm being facetious, a month of Sundays just to get a permit to dig in some of the areas where this pipe goes through. And there's a big danger that when they dug it up, it would open up anyway, and then cause contamination, which would then have to be abated by us. Plymouth is dealing with that issue right now, and they've spent $50 million, and everybody's suing everybody, and 50 million is probably the tip of the iceberg. So the quicker we get it done, and the faster we stabilize the pipes, the better. Now, the lining is supposed to be good for about 50 years, so you get another 50 years out of it. However, you can reline them again. And the good news is, is that now there's a plan in place to keep them sort of relined as time goes on. They got actually a ni, a nice plan, it's there someplace, it's kind of thick, about their infrastructure and how they're going to take care of it in the future. Remember, they couldn't do it before, it wasn't possible. You just had to think, it's just like this building, it gets to the end of its year, okay, now we're going to have to work on it and do something to it. It's the nature of the way things work.
What's, what's the lining? I mean, is it like a flexible lining that goes in?
It's like, it's epoxy.
Oh, an epoxy.
An epoxy, so you, you have a fiberglass lining, if you will, it's like a sock. The sock is impregnated with epoxy, and then the epoxy in the impregnated line is pulled in, inverted into the pipe.
Okay.
Then it's blown up, pressurized, adhere to the pipe, and that's the key, adhesion, to become one with the pipe, and then it's heated to cure. And once it cures, it becomes the pipe.
The pipe.
It's the pipe.
It's actually stronger than the pipe.
It is stronger, tensile strength is in the thousands.
Because if we had to dig these pipes up, if people are concerned about the disruptions of business and traffic on Route 628-
Oh, my God, it would be awful.
Think about it.
You're talking about trenches, 20 feet-
It would be absolutely awful.
And the streets be closed everywhere.
Absolutely.
Guy, how do you manage that leak with, with the system?
Presently?
Yes.
We just kind of keep an eye on it.
No, I meant with putting-
To manage it when we line it?
Yeah.
So what we do is, on the outside, we drill down, it's a little tiny quarter-inch pipe, or maybe a little three-quarter inch pipe, I think it's about a half inch, quarter, a half inch. We shoot it down next to it, we pump grout.
Mm-hmm.
We keep pumping grout, and the grout touches the water, it falls, it flows in, and then it hardens, and it literally becomes a clamp to that flow. Once we clamp that flow, then we go in and we align it. And then that gives us the ability, if we leave this like it is, and we try to put the lining, just the temperature of the water will play with the curing.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to clamp it, so it's not so much the pressure, it's the temperature. It just won't let that portion get to 170 degrees.
And we saw that work in Swift's, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that was the fix there. Just, Pat, one more thing. The project, the long-term project that we've been talking about for seven years, with the 9.5 million gallon output into the canal that the Maritime Academy holds, which would solve future growth issues for town, whatever, does that project, does that pipe that will go back there, does that go down 628?
No. 628 was an alternative, it's going to actually come out of the back of the wastewater facility-
Okay.
Hit the railroad, all the way down to Cohasset Narrows, on the rail.
Okay.
Then jump under the river, under the bay, and then come up at Mass Maritime.
The only reason why I ask is, if they're going to be doing the road and stuff, if it was going to go there, then we should do both at the same time, or else would-
I agree with you.
It would never finish.
I agree with you.
Now, the railroad was the easiest way.
Yeah.
I just didn't know. Originally, it said 628.
That's a much more complicated endeavor, because you've got other, you know, you're almost creating a regional sewer plant at that point in time. Just so you understand, rather than enter into inter-municipal service agreements with these other towns through the Board of Selectmen, I think if we're going to do a regional approach, then we actually need to create a regional sewer district with the other towns, and go through state legislature, get it created, just like the Volk School.
I will leave that to the Board of Selectmen.
I think that's firmer, it's a lot harder to weasel out of one of those than it is to weasely way out of an agreement that's got to be renewed every five years, and I'd hate to see the taxpayers spend 10 million bucks on this to have the other towns say, "Yeah, you know, we've been thinking about it, and, you know, we're not going to do it now."
I agree. With you, Chairman, and I'm going to leave that to this board to make that decision. It's called commitment, and that may be a greater commitment for all. Sometimes when you have a piece of the pie, or you have, you know, some skin on the table, you're more likely to, to adhere to your responsibilities, but that's going to be up to this board. As far as I'm concerned, in the board's, in the sewer department, for the town itself, the capacity has come into a close, so moving the outfall for Wareham would be one thing. If it's going to be regional, and I, and I promote it, then you're right, we should have some type of predetermined what we're going to do now instead of later.
Yep.
And I leave that to this board to, to make that decision through the town administrator. You guys tell us how we want it.
There's a lot of people pushing this, that would like to see it from the state level.
Yep.
The, as you know, the Coalition and others would like to see this happen, because it really could do a good job of stabilizing the region along this part of the bay.
What's the fact of velocity of the flushing of the canal?
Exactly.
Incredible. Lot better than what we have in the Ripper.
Exactly. And, and in the river, where it hasn't been flushed in so many years, makes it a nitrogen catch basin, basically, you know, makes it more difficult.
Yeah, I know.
Even though, even though I want you to know, we have probably the most efficient nitrogen system in the, in the world, right now, that's operational. I mean, what are we putting out, very small amount?
2.2.
2.2. It was designed to put out less than four, right?
Four, 4.0 is our permit.
Yep.
And we're putting out 2.2, which is incredible, it's been recognized by the EPA, by the Bay Coalition.
That's pretty incredible.
And it's, it's, it does a great job.
Pretty amazing how good that we're doing, I mean, it really is, I mean, that's just absolutely amazing.
Town administrator has a couple of questions.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. One, with this being repair, is it eligible for SRF funding?
It, it may be, I talked to the DEP, but we're not even on this year, so we'd have to postpone it, do the application down the road. What I'm trying to find out now is if I went ahead and borrowed, could I have the SRF funding pay off the borrowed? And I'm told that it can, but I can't verify that. I'll get more research on that, because it, it is. And also with SRF funding, to you, Mr. Town Administrator, is that 0% financing is the way to go? However, there is some criteria for that. One is a growth factor, and there's some other factors. So, if we're going to borrow 10 million over 20 years, I would prefer seeing 0% at a tremendous saving than 2%, 3%, 4%. I think 2% is their bottom line. I'm also looking into that, and I do have that information to do that, too, so.
And USDA reporting.
USDA report.
With this technology, where the pipes are connected, sometimes the connections actually start going, even the fasteners, if you will. No problems with that?
No, it actually makes it one continuous pipe. So, you have no potential of the joint leaking. With every technology in the pipe, whether it's rubber, or in these cases, they put concrete, you're always susceptible to the movement, because you're in water, the movement and the penetration of water roots, whatever, into that. With this technology, it makes it one continuous pipe, no ability to penetrate and get within it. So, it'll make that joint stronger. And actually, it has some flex. So, the flexion there, as the water ground moves or whatever, it'll take that flex. I forget the actual percent, but it won't even bother it. So, it becomes one continuous pipe. So, it's a better deal than what we originally have in.
All right. And we just have to, if you could check with SRF, because if we're going to permanently finance this over, let's say, 20 years, the bonds might not be callable for a period of years.
And I would like to look, because you're right, because if we could call them 510, I don't really know what's available, and I'll leave that to the financial experts in the town. But, boy, if we can get them callable, it'd be great. What's out there is not. And doing this management course through University Sacramento, University of California Sacramento, and their suggestion callable bonds, and they have five years, 10 years, and 20 years, it's all new to me. But I would suggest if we can call them, I'd like to see them called. But if they can't be, they can't be. I'm not privy to that information, but it's something to consider, absolutely. And so, I'll find out for you through SRF funding if we can, if we, again, it's a timeframe. We're not on the list, and to get us R funding, you need to be on the list. And we're not on the list. And so, we have to wait for next year's list to come out, and then you may get out the following year. So, we're two to three years out, so that's mainly a concern.
And then the last, just, we've talked about Plymouth a little bit, just so people understand, what are the age of these pipes?
1978.
What were the age of Plymouth's pipes?
10 years.
So...
They thought they had a good idea. I don't know.
So, that's how I want people to understand, when we're talking about what we've gotten out of these pipes. And while Plymouth is an extreme other way, well, that, you know...
These pipes owe us nothing.
Yep.
They owe us nothing. They've done a great job. And just the nature of what they do, within wastewater, there's hydrogen sulfide, and everybody knows hydrogen sulfide. The bacteria actually put out acid, is what they excrete, and the acid eat. So, you can see it. So, we've gotten everything we could possibly get out of these pipes. Pipes owe us nothing. And to Selectman Trapiano's point, it's the end of their life, and we're going to fix them, and it's...
Don't assume everybody knows. I failed chemistry, so...
I just have one last question. On the SRF funding, you say we're not on the list for next year. Can you and Derek give me information? Because, again, the legislative committee that I'm on is environment. If we have the potential of an emergency where the state could be catastrophic, I don't see why I can't go to the state and say, "Get us on the list of something." At least try.
We can. It doesn't hurt to try, all the political help you can get. I mean, as far as DEP, they said we're not on the list, but you know something? I've learned that anything's possible, but you've got to ask. If you don't ask, it's not possible.
We always say the same thing, if you don't ask, you know?
It's not possible. So, definitely. I'll get you the information, and then you can, you know, inquire. That'll be great.
And then in the meantime...
I don't interfere in the wrong way. That's all I'm trying to say.
No.
In the meanwhile, Mr. Campina and I will sit down with John and the Finance Director, and we'll put it out, bond council, and see what we'd be looking at. I'm thinking 20-year term for this.
That's what I'm thinking. In the interim, I was going to put some toilet seats throughout town for donations. We'll see how that goes. So, if you see a toilet seat someplace in your neighborhood, it's for money. It's not to use, it's to drop money in.
You have to put a sign there for that, or else you're going to have a problem. Please, no toilet paper.
No toilet paper.
Your version of gold and other people's is very different, Guy.
Yes, it is.
I only hope the Conservation Agent isn't listening tonight.
I'm sure. Yeah, I'm sure one of the members is, though.
I wonder which one that is.
Yeah, me, too.
Anything else for these gentlemen, or?
No. Wish the news was good.
I'd like to make a motion that we include the $10 million on the special town warrant.
Second.
Okay. Motion to place the article on the special town meeting warrant by Selectman Trapiano, seconded by Selectman Scaziotti, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstain, 4-0-0.
Thank you so much for your support. I really appreciate it. Let's scratch your fingers, because that's an awful big hole to put your finger on.
Let's just...
Yeah.
Get your finger in the dike.
It's not leaving is the problem.
Right.
What you mean, it's okay.
Thanks for your work on this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Take care.
Thank you for the wonderful...
Yeah, that's, you see the, you see, you see below...
I'm just looking at that piece there. I'm not going to leave those, not on campus all the time.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll just leave them there for now.
Who meets in here tomorrow night? Is it FinCon?
It's going to go.
I think it's FinCon tomorrow. We're here Thursday.
All right, but FinCon's...
Oh, that's right. No, mine.
You know, one time, I did a water service.
Thank you so much.
I keep thinking the FinCon should be here, and they don't.
I got to tell you a story, if you don't mind. All right, so, I do, you know, water connections and things, as everybody knows. And you can see the water coming in through the pipe, and you know that that's eating away at the pipe at the same time it's coming in. I did a water service one time, and, brand-new water service, and we put a corporation in there, which is basically a shut-off, okay? And the connections to it were leaking a little bit. There was a spray coming out of it. And it literally, in the course of about two days, cut the corporation in half. Just the spray of the water coming out underground, cut right through it.
Yep.
So, this is the kind of stuff that can happen. That's a pretty, that's a pretty thing that could happen, you know, anytime. I mean, it just really is. It's been going ongoing, and it really has to get resolved relatively quickly.
That's only one of many.
There are others, there's many. I mean, we know we've had infill and infiltration in these pipes for years and years and years. We knew that when we did the Winko repair, I don't know if anybody remembers, we did that. And we're lucky, we only ended up chasing 20 feet of that transite pipe down there. We're lucky we didn't have to trace, you know, 100 feet of pipe to try to get it, because it's the way it is with transite, you know?
Well, and once you start digging, getting down into it, it keeps on breaking the whole way along.
Oh, it's like, it's crazy, so...
Okay, well, going back, we just put one article on for the special town meeting. I know that you had talked, Selectman Trapiano, about the possibility of an overnight commercial vehicle parking ban.
Yep.
I did speak with Chief Walsh about it. He also serves as the Road Commissioner.
Those are the guys that should probably promote this ultimately.
Yeah. His concern, and I think it's a legitimate one, is you take a place like Onset where there's, you know, nobody has a driveway, or half the houses don't have a driveway.
Good point.
And, you know, you've got a plumber who's got a van or something, and it's been parked out there with no issue for, you know, decades, and now all of a sudden, you're going to make him move his van somewhere else.
Well, it's a good point.
So, it's probably need to work with them to come up with a gross vehicle weight approach.
Yeah, I think that's something the Road Commissioners should be, you know, we should have sent over there, and I think we did, right? For them to discuss and...
Officially.
We what?
I don't know that we sent anything officially yet.
We talked about it.
We talked about it.
I think we should send a letter to them if we want to do that.
Yeah, we should send something over to them, let them figure out, you know, what they think.
Okay, I can get a letter over to them and just...
I should make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We send them a letter about our concerns about traffic overnight, commercial traffic overnight. I wasn't thinking of the individual that has, you know, a...
Electric electrician's van, or a plumber's van.
Exactly. I wasn't thinking of those at all. Those didn't even cross my mind. I'm thinking more like the tractor trailer truck that drives up.
Gravel truck, yeah.
Pox on the side of the road, or, you know, tow trucks and things like that, that are real true, you know, commercial vehicles. In my opinion, that those, the vans from electrician or plumber are really not really an issue.
No. Okay, I'll get that out to them and see what their thoughts are.
You can vote.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Motion by...
I made the motion.
Motion by Selectman Trapiano, seconded by Selectman Slavin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. I'll get a letter out, copy the rest of the board on it. Other articles for the special town meeting, anything percolating?
No.
No.
You're going to have anything?
We usually have transfers.
Yeah.
Budget transfers. But I actually think with the, I'm just going to double-check with the Universal Martinization Act, I believe that the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee can do that now without an active town meeting.
Correct.
Right.
That's one of the little changes.
Okay. All right, well, this will be a recurring article right up until we close, recurring agenda item until we close the warrant. Let's see. Discussion regarding Board of Selectmen's position on Woodland Cove 40B project, possible vote to authorize chairman to submit correspondence to ZBA.
All right, so, are you going to talk for this long, or? I'm going to have to leave while you guys discuss this.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
Woodland Cove, I'm going to go out. I got to go to the bathroom.
Yeah, it'll be a few minutes.
All right.
I'll have a slice of pizza.
You'll have a slice of pizza.
Mary, I'll let you back in when we're done.
Yeah.
You want to explain why or not necessary?
No, it's not necessary. Okay, good? Yep. Okay, this project, you know, as we all know, we've sent two letters to the Department of Housing and Community Development about this project. The board was not in support of it from the beginning. It's too big. A town this size shouldn't be forced to absorb a project this size. I don't know that we'll get anywhere with it, but next week, interestingly enough, the same day as the hearing, the Town Administrator and I have a brief audience with the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development. And one of the things I'm going to say to him is, if you really want to fix 40B and make it manageable, you need for the size of the town, the population of the town, to be taken into account. 174-unit project in Boston, or even in Brockton and New Bedford, is not that big a deal. 174-unit project in a town with a population of 22,000, where you're going to grow the population of the town by, you know, 3%, 4% all at once over the course of a couple of years, is just too much for a town like ours to bear. And it's an unfair burden on the smaller communities. So, that's something we'll mention in passing to him. But again, they've submitted, finally submitted an application. They did finally get a project eligibility letter based upon their original proposal, which they went back to after feeling around as to whether they could sneak a 240-unit development past us. So, now the time has come for us to decide what we want to ask the Zoning Board of Appeals to look for during their hearing. And I'm thinking that every possible impact to the town needs to be studied, whether it's on the school department, the sewer department. I would suggest the Onset Fire and Water Districts, look at it both from the aspect of fire safety and combating fire in these units, to the fact that they could be getting several hundred more water users in a district that only services about, what, 2,500 people? There's a lot going on here, and a lot at stake.
I think, I checked with Charlie Kluber from the Provincial Committee over at the district in Onset, and there is some concerns about the size of the water pipe itself diameter-wise, what it can and can't serve. So, we can reach out, but they also need to reach out and actually bring these things forward, because you have to remember, this project, a good part of it is in the Onset Fire and Water District, not the Wareham piece.
Right.
Everybody thinks it's Wareham, it's really not.
Right.
And so, and we are allowed to ask for mitigation impact on this. The real issue, which is unfortunate for everybody, is that the state is on a real push to develop housing. You know, workforce plays, affordable housing, et cetera. And they've made a commitment from the governor on down. So, what's happening is, in my opinion only, DHCD is kind of, I won't say lax, but the description of what's affordable, and, you know, the things that would, you know, stop projects, is really kind of put aside with the goal of just getting housing.
Right.
Because, you know, if you look at the project and the impact to the town, and, you know, everything else going on, it almost doesn't make sense, but we don't have a lot of leverage, simply because, at the end of the day, the goal is more housing.
Right. I mean, at this point, it's almost like the Vietnam War, all they cared about was body counts. All these guys care about is units.
They've made a commitment to the number of units they want this year, next year, and the year. I'm hoping that with Derek speaking to Secretary Ash, and we have a good relationship there, they'll at least listen to us.
The, you know, obviously, we've also, we need to look at the impact on Wareham PD. And, you know, my real concern is, this is all based out of Boston when it really comes down to it. Boston, the pricing has skyrocketed. People cannot afford to live in Boston. However, our community is not a Boston bedroom community. So, if you're bringing 174, you know, probably greater than that if you're thinking two-person households, we do not have the current job capacity to support those persons.
We have no job capacity.
So, what I'm just trying to figure out is, what's the, what's the end game here? If, I understand, if, you know, if we had the commuter rail running through here, maybe it'd make more sense. There is, there is nothing from that site that really allows the persons that would reside there to have a better life, whether that's being able to enjoy recreational, the job, there's nothing there. And it's the overall size of it, it's just really difficult to get over. I think workforce housing is a great, is great. You know, we really need to look at something like that. However, at such an enormity, I mean, if you were looking at maybe 40, 40 units there with some sort of amenities, that's something that could be really, really good, but not 174.
You know, one of the things here is, too, is that this is all, you know, this is the agenda item here, but this is also all caught up in our efforts at the state level to have mobile homes count as affordable housing. And Representative Gifford's efforts in that regard. In fact, we wouldn't have gotten this meeting with Secretary Ash without her going and requesting it. I mean, you know, Secretary Ash was nice enough to come down in the fall and spend a couple of hours with us in town, but he's got 351 towns to be concerned about. So, we're certainly grateful that she put a bug in his ear about this. So, we, you know, we will hopefully have an opportunity to just mention this project. It is part of a larger overall approach that the town needs to take towards 40B, and to persuade the legislature to at least take the affordable housing we have here, and count it towards the 10% quota, and then, you know, hope that that does happen someday. You know, I know that every Board of Selectmen, just about, you know, for 20 years almost, has been trying this. I know Representative Gifford, since she was first elected in 2002, has been trying this. We're actually finally getting an audience with a cabinet-level person on this, which is kind of amazing in and of itself, so we thank her for that. As for the letter, I'm not going to be able to attend the 40B seminar tomorrow night, but it is being taped. I'll take a look at it.
It's basically really to inform the ZBM members, which are almost all fairly new, about the whole process.
Yep.
That's the main idea for it.
Right. But I'll still watch it, and I'm sure I can pick up some things from it as well, even though he's got a pretty good understanding of the law. But, you know, the letter is going to request that these ZBA take into account pretty much every possible impact upon the town, and to insist in the permitting process that the concerns and mitigation be addressed. You know, again, we can't shrink the project in and of ourselves, that just doesn't work that way. 40B, at the end of the day, is an end-around pasture local zoning bylaw.
The proposal is to shrink it, nobody else.
Yeah. But at the same time, you know, we are entitled to insist upon the developer minimizing the impacts to us. And the only way to do that is to know what the impacts are, and it's upon the, you know, upon the ZBA to demand those things of the developer. So, that's what we certainly hope happens next Wednesday. And I would urge everybody who's concerned about this to show up again next Wednesday, and back us up here, because we can't do it alone.
Quick comment. Our representative bill, just if everybody doesn't know, failed again because of no support in the House. There is a bill still in the Senate, sitting with Senator Pacheco, waiting for the DOR report on the financial status of people who live in mobile home parks. It's been difficult to get the numbers. They need that in order to basically figure out whether or not the people living there qualify under the Affordable designation, because of the actual income level of who lives in these particular places also accounts to whether it's affordable or not. I got information actually through the CPC, which is the Community Preservation Committee. I forget, there's a woman out of Boston, last name is O'Donnell. I think she's a lawyer. Kathleen, I think it is, O'Donnell?
Yep.
She made some comments. She went actually up to DHCD to one of the main directors, and she asked a really interesting question. What if the property, those mobile home park owners, not the people who own the mobile homes themselves, but the park owners, the land, deeded the land affordable? Which was really thinking quite differently. And what Kathleen came back with is that the person she talked to said, "That's interesting. We could consider that," which we've never heard ever before. So I think we need to kind of look and see. I talked to the Hallihans, who own Garden Homes, East, North, whatever. They have like at least two major pieces here.
And he, by the way, has come to town meeting, and on behalf of the Massachusetts Park Owners' Association, of which he's the president, has spoken in favor of 40B.
I spoke to his father, actually, today.
Relief.
Because he was coming into town hall when I was going out, and we talked about it again. And I was concerned, because the only issue I could see is that if a mobile park homeowner of the land uses that as collateral for bank loans or something, if it's deeded affordable, it may affect whether the bank would do it or not. But he said that, basically, he said he didn't think it'd be a problem for him. So I'm not sure how we go forward on that particular piece, whether we do it through the Town Administrator, reaching out to them to see. I'm not sure the board has the authority to go do this. I just don't know. This is something completely new and different, but, you know, if it works, you know, we basically go from probably 7% or 8% to above 14% or 15%.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's the first time I've heard of anybody at DHCD saying, "Yeah, it's possible." Doesn't mean it's gonna happen, but we've never had that answer. The answer's always been no. They're the ones that fight it more than anyone else.
Yep.
So I think we should, you know, take advantage of another organization.
Yep.
That's willing to support us.
Absolutely.
So...
So is that...
That takes care of that.
Well, I'll need a vote to authorize me to send a letter.
Motion to send a letter.
Second.
Okay, motion to send the letter by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scaziotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 3-0-0. Thank you. And Mary, if you could let Selectman Tropiano back in? Thanks. Okay, that was item B. Item C, we already took care of.
What he knows.
Well, the one... I have something, but let's wait for...
Patrick, come back in.
Yeah. Do you have any, Selectman Tropiano?
48 hours? No, just that thing we were gonna talk about, which we seem to have already talked about.
Yeah.
[laughing].
Selectman Scaziotti?
Oh, all set, thank you.
I've done enough today already.
All right, then, I guess we won't waste time talking more about the thing we already talked about. Let's see. Town Administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, Friday, I went to Worcester to the Town Hall to meet with... There were several people there, including Lieutenant Governor Polito, Secretary Ash, and this was to go over the Opportunity Zone Program, which was created through the Federal Tax Cut and Jobs Act of 2017. So just to give you a little background, the Opportunity Zones are designated districts where an individual with capital gains from other investments can receive favorable tax treatment by investing those capital gains into economic activities in the zone, including business supports, in some cases, property development. The problem is, we have two such zones in Wareham, which is good and bad when you look at it. However, there's 547 of them across the Commonwealth, and the governors for each state are only allowed to designate up to 25%. So that'd be about 137 districts. What I'd like to do is put together a proposal to Secretary Ash and the governor for one of the districts. And when you look at them, in speaking with the secretary, they're really concentrating not on the residential sectors, which is more of our northern district, if you will, our southern, which actually, believe it goes all the way down to Great Neck, which I'm guessing that some of residents aren't included in the income. But that really includes Tremont Nail, Main Street, Pioneer sections of Swifts and such. So I'd like to include that as the zone and move forward and put together a proposal. One of the big things that we have in our favor already is from the Mass Development Report on Tremont Nail and some of the other activities, including the slums and blights study that we're currently doing. So we'd like to leverage all the programs that we currently have going on to see if we can make this one of the areas. And we have to sell that. We have the ability to really... Really what you're selling is, these funds, they're gonna be wealth funds put together, would they want to invest in this community? And I think between the Tremont Nail down to Baker's Property and such, this is really... This would be a prime section for really people that they had the vision to invest in.
Merchant's Way. Train station, developing a train station on Main Street.
Correct.
To actually revitalize business as well.
It would be... It's a huge opportunity.
It doesn't come very often.
No. Now, the great thing is, we have roughly a week to do it. So if you're okay with it, we'll continue on and proceed.
Basically, ask you to do whatever you can.
Yeah, interesting, so people understand. We received notification last week to come to the meeting on Friday that the governor needs to send his recommendations by March 22nd.
Sorry, everybody's under the gun here. So you're looking for an endorsement from the board?
I'd just like to see if that's...
So may.
It's fine by me.
No, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, let's take advantage of this.
This was definitely a short notice period. I only heard about it a week ago.
I don't know how the Great Neck people, including former Selectman Whiteside, will feel about their properties being included in essentially a slum and blight area, but that's an interesting problem for them to have, isn't it?
It'd be the name of a house, you know? They have different...
Slum and blight, that's true, yeah.
I'm not gonna tell her. I'll just put it that way.
A lot of them. I can't resist on that one.
The interesting part, just, and it sort of kicks back to what I was speaking about, the unemployment rate for that area is between 11% and 12%. So considering nationally, we're below 4%. It tells you, you know, we have some...
Yeah, we qualify.
So...
It's, as you said, it's good that we qualify and it's bad that we qualify.
That's not a good thing.
But that's what these programs, the theory we designed to help was to...
It just reinforces that we don't have work.
Yep.
We don't have economic development, which people can work. They've gotta travel either toward Providence, up at least close to 120, even to Boston. A lot of people don't have the assets of transportation to get there.
Yep.
It's a tough road.
So anything else you wanna tell us, or?
No.
No?
Don't tell you anything else.
All right, then. Liaison Initiative Report, Selectman Tropiano.
You just had all of mine.
Yep. Selectman Scaziotti?
Nope, all set.
Clerk Slavin?
You've really got most of what was going on this past week, you know, up at the State House and stuff that I did. The only other things we have, as the board knows, I've been banging away for the last five years, you know, trying to figure out some solutions for the, you know, the council on aging.
Yeah.
Since I used to be actually a board member of the council, which most people have forgotten. You know, Judy and I tried to put together something originally at Hammond School, which the Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors were fully behind. The... We've been getting some feedback on the original article about a community center. As you know, the YMCA stepped up, and they would like to basically, themselves, become more of a community center, offering more things. So there's been some initial discussion, and very vague, you know? It's not anything in detail, just, you know, throwing things out to see what might work. And I got an email today from Serpent, of all people, reading an article and saying they would like to offer what they call DLTA, which is technical assistance, and some staffing to write grants.
Oh.
You know, for the projects. So I stopped in at the Y today. The problem I have with this is, I'm doing this really as a facilitator to put people in, because I made it very clear that the town of Wareham does not have money to fund this.
Right.
Because if we even get involved with it, and a year later, there's no funding, that means it fails. So it makes no sense whatsoever to do something that you know is gonna fail. So we have basically, you know, a couple of different groups that have their own funding, you know, they're nonprofits, and that's really what it is. But I talked to Derek a little bit today, that there are certain things that they were talking about that maybe they could pull into their operations, but it's gotta go through the town and through the Town Administrator. So I think the next meeting sometime in March, when the Y decides they wanna meet and talk about it, would be that it would have a Town Administrator go as well, to make sure that whatever people are planning is really feasible, so there's no misinformation and any confusion. Because this is not a simple thing to do. And when I proposed, what I put together, everybody was to try and keep us out of it, because all we can do is, you know, probably mess it up ourselves.
Yep.
So as I said, I mentioned to Derek about this, physically going to the next meeting. I think I'll wait till after the March 1st COA meeting, make sure they're still interested in trying to do this for the seniors and all, because I don't wanna do something that's gonna...
Well, I did speak with Chairman Dunlop this weekend about this, and I won't even call it a project, because at this point, it's just a concept.
It's concept only.
And I, you know, I know that he's still, you know, zealous to see this happen, even if it's not under the auspices of the COA directly, even if the Y is the party that's doing things, but...